Christian Legner, she will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. This time, I'd like to do a roll call of the council, the manager, and the attorney. This is Don Kingston, Mayor.
Monica Thibodeau, Mayor pro tem.
Rob Mooney, Council.
Sandy Whitman, Council.
Nancy Cavaness, Council.
Drew Havens, Town Manager.
Robert Hobbs, Town Attorney.
Also with us this evening, we have Joe Hurd, Director of Community Development, Donna Black, our Fire Chief, Jeff Ackerman, Police Chief, Lori Ackerman, Town Clerk, Kay Nickens, Deputy Town Clerk, and Christian Legner, our PIO. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to inform those listening in or those that are going to watch this video, this will be, well, I should say, starting in July, we will no longer have Zoom capability, we're going to go to YouTube, so we will be recording the meeting, but it'll no longer be live for participants other than perhaps out-of-town speakers, so the Zoom capability will be eliminated come the end of July, and if you want to make public comments, you'll need to be present in the meeting as well as council. With that, we're going to go on to public comments, item number two. Anybody would like to address the council? Please come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. The first public comment comes from John Park. Mayor Kingston and council members, I want to commend Jay Blows for your, to you, for approval as a member of the Town of Duck Planning Board. You should already be aware of Jay's excellent professional qualifications as an architect with decades of experience. I want to commend him to you as a dedicated and service-oriented member of the Sandering community. He has been chairman for our new Government Relations Committee for more than a year now. Jay was already famous for attending all of the Town of Duck Planning Board and Town Council meetings, so we asked him to form a small committee to capture and convey items of interest to the Sandering Property Owners Association Board of Directors and its members. Jay's reports have been comprehensive, timely, and without personal bias. He and his wife Karen are active throughout our community, and Jay is always willing to help us identify safety and property concerns, as we hope all of our neighbors will do, so our association can respond promptly to eliminate hazards and maintain community standards to the benefit of all of our members. I am impressed that Jay is solid in his thinking and convincing in standards to the benefit of all of our members. I'm sorry. I am impressed that Jay is solid in his thinking and convincing in his dialogue, but he is also quick to listen to other perspectives to incorporate them into his own. All the marks of a great communicator. He and Karen have a beautiful home, which seems unrelated to the recommendation for the planning board, but it is an indication of the pride that he takes in his personal life and work, and we are thankful that as his only full-time neighbors on our street. I confidently recommend Jay for your favorable consideration as a member of the Town of Duck Planning Board. Respectfully, John Park, President, Board of Directors, Sandering Property Owners Association, 109 Waxwing Lane. The next one is from Patty Bossert, 102 Pelican Way? I always want to say 104. My question is directed toward the budget planning. The safety and security of residents, property owners, and visitors to the northern portions of Duck are adversely affected by the following significant issues: lack of acceptable coverage by the Dare County EMS ambulance, lack of lifeguards beyond Ocean Pines. In the past, Sandering Homeowners Association, Sandering Property Owners Association, and Palmer's Island beaches do not have lifeguards. Last year, a NOAA scientist drowned in front of 104 Pelican Way in Sandering Homeowners Association. Police radios do not function well in the northern sections of Duck. We pay the same taxes as other Duck residents, and it is the responsibility of the council to ensure the safety and security of all Duck residents is administered equitably. We are aware of the J1 issues this year regarding COVID restrictions impacting employers. However, when these restrictions are lifted, we are requesting lifeguards for next year to be deployed to all of our beaches. Why haven't these beaches had lifeguards assigned? Patty Bossert.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you to John Park and Patty Bossert for their public comments. The council and the manager also received a lengthy email from several members of the HOR Forum, which we are not going to read tonight, but it will be responded to from the manager and the council, and both the memo and the response will be posted on our website. There'll be no other public comments this evening. Public comments is closed. We'll go on to item number three, the consent agenda. This evening, it contains minutes from the April 21, 2021 regular meeting, an engagement letter for bond council, and certain budget amendments, and with that, we'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
I guess I was just asking about the one budget amendment, the unforeseen expenses to do with the, I just, I wasn't clear on exactly, was that just some contingency expenses that went along with the contract?
Which amendment are you referring to, for governing body?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So that was, when the budget was created for fiscal '21, you didn't anticipate needing to hire developmental associates to run a town manager search, so that's where professional services ran over.
Oh, that's the entire, I mean, that's the entirety of it? I thought we--
No, ma'am. No. So there's, that's what we need to make up the difference--
Make up the difference.
--in order to keep the governing body department whole through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. So it's kind of, we had the, we had some budgeting. Obviously, we didn't expect a budget for that, but this is just to kind of round out that, have the departmental, so it's just general. It struck me as something that maybe had just come up, and that's why I was confused. Okay, thank you.
Just trying to clean up before the end of the fiscal year.
Definitely. Okay, thank you.
In essence, we had other funds to cover part of that expense.
Sir?
We had other funds to cover that expense in the governing body.
Correct, yep.
Thank you, Drew, for that clarification.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion on the consent agenda? There being done, we'll do a roll call vote. Mayor votes aye. Mayor pro tem, Thibodeau?
Aye.
Councilmember Mooney?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes five to zero. Thank you. Item number four, this evening, we have four public hearings. First public hearing is a discussion consideration of proposed four-year later 2022 budget, and this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Town Attorney, Robert Hobbs.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we will open the public hearing on consideration of the fiscal year 2022 budget. If you'd like to make a comment or a presentation with regard to the budget, if you'll come forward and state your name and address, please. Would you like to make a presentation first? I apologize. So before we do that, the Town Manager will make a presentation.
I will be brief. So, council, you have before you the draft budget. We've discussed this now at two meetings, and this is the formal public hearing on the draft. I'm not going to go through a lengthy presentation as I did before, just want to hit the high points, so the budget is balanced, a little over $13 million, just under $14 million total in revenue and expenditures. There's a, this is just a breakdown of the revenues that are included in the general fund budget. This is information that you've seen. The draft budget document was posted to the town's website the day after your mid-month meeting, so it's been available for public review since then. We'll point out that the budget does include a tax increase of 2.36 cents. The chart that I'm showing here is one that I showed to the council during your mid-month meeting, showing that our budget, the one in Southern Shores, the one in NAGS, had all do include proposed tax rate increases, and with, even with our tax rate increase this year, we'll move from the second lowest in the county to the lowest in the county for added lower tax rate. The table that I'm showing here, it's also in the budget document, just shows the effect of the tax rate increase on a number of different assessed values. So folks that are reading the budget document can see, you know, for instance, if you have a house that's assessed at $700,000, your total tax liability would increase by $165 a year. So that just shows the impact to our taxpayers. The table in the budget document has more detail, many more assessed value levels in that. No change in the MSD rates. We're still confident that those will get us through the end of fiscal '22. We'll be having some more conversation with you at your mid-month meeting this month about MSD rates, but we're, again, we're confident that those rates are good for fiscal '22. And again, just some bullet points regarding how we estimated revenue in the general fund for this year, and this is all information that you all have had and explained to you a couple of times. Just more about revenue, and I think just, you know, the pie chart really says a lot, so just a little over a third of our revenue, but well under half, is from property taxes. So the general fund budget is made up, as you can see here, the gray is grants, the red there, that big piece of pie, is transfers. So that's money that comes in from our beach nourishment fund to pay the debt service on beach nourishment. You can see the local government sales taxes is the yellow, and then the orange is the occupancy tax. So you can see shared revenues that we get are a big part of the budget, so we're not heavily reliant, or as heavily reliant, on local property tax. And just to show you how the money is spent, so each dollar, about .33 of every dollar goes to public safety, which makes sense, that's very personnel-intensive, and personnel tends to be a pretty large chunk of our expenditures. Streets and highways, 21 cents of every dollar, and that may seem a little odd because we own neither, streets nor highways. This department is where the highway NC-12 elevation project and the living shoreline, that's in this department, so that's why it's that high this year, the 21 cents. Environmental protection is your beach, beach nourishment, so again, it's 21 cents, and you can see the rest of them there, general government, is 12 cents, so that's the administrative overhead, if you will. You know, so it's Town Council, it's finance, it's administration, and so on. And then community development, obviously, is a pretty small piece. Sorry, Joe. Again, not a whole lot of personnel in community development, but again, a very, very important function of the town. This just breaks down, and this is, again, is in the budget document, shows the breakdown of the, kind of the gross level expenditure category, so personnel, capital, and operating. Personnel is about 26% of our expenditures. The proposed budget does add five and a half positions, two police, two fire, one in community development, and then a half a position in public facilities. We have a half-time maintenance technician now proposing to increase that to a full-time position. Assuming no change in service demand, this should be it. I shouldn't be standing here next year, I'm looking at my chiefs and my department directors, I shouldn't be standing here next year saying we need more people. We believe that this will carry us through for several years, again, unless there are service demand changes, those service demand changes are going to come through you. You're going to, you're going to need to say that you want to increase or enhance the services we offer, and if that requires personnel, we'll let you know that and let you make that decision at that time. But we're good after this year. Just, again, all this information is in the budget document, available on the website. $340,000 in this budget is for the new positions. There is $76,000 and some change for implementing the pay plan recommendations that came out of the MAP study that you heard from Becky Beazey about at your mid-month meeting.
Are they all effective July 1?
Yes, sir. And then just shows the way the personnel costs obviously have increased as we've increased staff. Again, with our 40 personnel count, we should be good for several years. Charge shows the breakdown of personnel costs, the majority of that is in salary and wages, and then medical insurance is obviously another big expenditure for us. The operations, that big category, not a whole lot here, so $74,000 if you round it. This is where you have travel and training, and this is where you have computer replacements, so we are on a schedule for replacing our computers. You can see those there. Capital, about just under $3 million in capital expenditures being proposed here. Again, we've covered all this. Council, you've heard a lot of detail about your capital improvement plan in the retreat this year. The staff did a fantastic job of pulling that CIP together for your consideration and presenting that to you at your retreat. You can just see those expenditures here. The items that I keep in red are expenditures that are offset by revenues. We're anticipating getting grant funding for the Highway 12 project, and the four items at the bottom there are all debt-funded, so on the revenue side of the budget is proceeds from debt to pay for those, for those items, and the debt service is included in future projections. And then speaking of debt service, it's about $1.8 million total in debt service for fiscal '22, the largest, obviously, being still for the beach nourishment, and this is the last debt service payment we have for the 2017 beach nourishment project. And then just a summary of expenditures, and again, the pie chart. You know, streets and highways is artificially high this year because of that, we're calling the brick project. Next year, you can expect that to be a smaller, smaller piece of the pie. We can always expect that police and fire will be the larger pieces of the pie, again, because they are personnel-intensive to provide those public safety services. And this is a summary, and I just, I didn't want to mention, I didn't mention this at the mid-month or the prior discussion we had about this, but in the budget ordinance is also, you're adopting a special fund or, you know, for your beach nourishment capital reserve fund. That's in the ordinance, and I just wanted to point that out here. So the revenue comes from MSD taxes. You get revenue from restricted sales tax, and we discussed that, so a portion of the sales tax revenue is restricted by law and must go into the beach nourishment fund, so that's, goes into this fund, will appropriate about $159,000 of fund balance from the beach nourishment fund in order to balance the expenditures, which are debt service. So that 1.5, almost $1.5 million is debt service, so that $159 is coming out of that fund balance, just in that fund. So I wanted to point out that that's also in the ordinance, which is what you're considering adopting. Also in the ordinance that you're considering adopting is your schedule of rates and fees. We have a schedule of rates and fees that's been in effect since 2013 or so. We've gone through and looked at those. Most of them are pretty accurate and pretty well in line with the market, if you will, in the area. The only change we made was for off-duty police, and that is, so that, that number there, that $46 an hour, is the fully loaded cost to us of providing the average police officer. So that's what we want to charge for events if folks need an off-duty officer. So that's part of the budget ordinance as well. And then the last part of the budget ordinance, typically seen, so this is the position, classification, and salary schedule, so it's really two pages out of Becky Beazey's work that are, the council, we sent that to you, so you have those two pages. Those are also referenced in the ordinance, so when you consider and vote on the budget, you're voting on all the expenditures and revenues that we've discussed, schedule of rates and fees, position and classification, and that, the beach nourishment fund as well. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you for public comments.
May I stand for a couple of questions, please?
Of course, yeah, questions for--
Two things. First of all, on the personnel chart, the one on page seven, could you superimpose public safety graph on that? Because I would assume that over the, over the years, that most of our growth has been in public safety by necessity, the one where we grew from 19.5 to 40.
Sure, I can provide that to the council.
Which just might be, I think, an interesting item. Second thing, on the capital reserve for beach nourishment, do we use the same capital reserve fund, or do we have to establish a new one?
It's the same one, but you just need to, you need to, you need to adopt a budget to recognize the revenues and to make the expenditures.
But we don't have to create a new fund?
No, sir.
I have a question on that as well. Were you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. When you were explaining the, on page 11, the capital reserve fund revenues and saying that we would be appropriating $159 and change for, from the fund balance--
Yes.
I was, you referenced it as the fund balance from the beach nourishment fund, and so that posed a question for me, because it's not from our regular fund balance, clearly, it's from this, and so, I mean, independent of all this down the road, I think it would be helpful for me to have a little history on where we are with the balance of that capital reserve fund, because of the fact that we're one year ahead, if you follow me, and we had a lot of conversation about that. So if you could just, you're presenting it in such a nice, distilled, and colorful way, all these other things, and to me, that would be very helpful for the public to come along with us on that, particularly since we're not changing the MSD rate from what we had and all that, you know, so a separate, something I'm trying to wrap my head around, and I think the public would appreciate that, too, so.
Sure. You will see that at your, at your mid-month meeting--
Great.
--this month, so I've already prepared the, kind of, again, colorful and graphic also to show you where you are with your beach nourishment fund currently, what things look like in the future, because you will have some decisions you'll need to make--
Because that's when Ken's coming back, right?
Yes, ma'am. So we'll look at, you know, different, different scenarios, if you decide that you want additional sand as part of your project, what that does to kind of the beach nourishment fund in the future. Again, we don't, we don't need to touch MSD rates this year, but, you know, if we add a significant amount of additional debt service to the beach nourishment project, we're going to need to look carefully at the MSD rates.
Right, and that's why bringing us along in the history, because anybody who's been following this as closely as we've been trying to knows that we got ahead of ourselves because the project was delayed a year, so now, as you point out, this 1.4 million is actually paying off the fifth year of our 2016 project, and so, you know, we collected, as I understand it, just, and we won't have to get too deep into it, but just, we've collected about a million from MSDs, we expect to collect a million on MSDs in this new budget--
Correct.
You know, and yet, so anyway, it's just going to help me keep the two projects separate, and what we've got in the money in the fund, and, you know, what is the general fund doing with it, maybe, if anything, and all that good stuff.
No, I understand, and you can expect to see a lot, a lot more detail about that when we get into the, kind of, your mid-month working session.
Right.
It is important, because you're being asked by Mr. Wilson to make some decisions, and the money is a big piece of that decision. We want to be sure that you have all the information you need as you're considering that.
Right. Okay, thank you so much, including our, like, decision to keep it the same, revenue neutral last year, and now we've jumped to this new tax rate, which, you know, in proposed new tax rate, all that. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions from council?
Yeah, so some of, some of our residents and non-resident property owners are asking a lot of questions about the budget, including, and I don't know if these numbers are accurate or not, but I'll ask, Joe, maybe you can explain it a little bit better. Is it a fact that in about five years, that our budgets increase 50% or nearly 50%?
That could be. I don't have it in front of me. So when we respond to that, that email that you all got--
Right.
--that we'll be able to provide--
And it wasn't just that email, though. Other people that I've spoken to are asking similar questions.
Yeah, I'm not going to guess without looking, yep.
And we're spending so much money under the title of streets and highways, we still have sections of Duck Trail that need a lot of work, and it's not just Sandering, it's like, from, from where it ended at a little south of Blue Heron, all the way down to Ocean Bay is a mess, Ocean Bay Boulevard. So these, you know, we're, we're spending a lot of money for something new to protect something that's falling apart, or parts of it that are falling apart. So I think we need to pay attention to maintenance and take care of what we've got, rather than considering what new things we want to do.
Okay, understood. And I think as we look at the, you know, as we look at the CIP going into next year, certainly, we want to be looking at that. I know there is some maintenance included in fiscal '22 for Duck Trail. Yeah, and if I recall the CIP right, that's, that's a recurring, that's a recurring expenditure for maintenance. It may not be, it may not be to the level that the council wants going forward in the future, and if that's the case, we can certainly, certainly look at that.
And the cost of the section of 12 that's going to be raised just south of Sunset, that's, is that going to be our responsibility, because that's, even though this is a state highway?
So that's what we're, that's the big question right now in terms of the brick grant from FEMA. So a large chunk of that is contingent upon receiving funding from FEMA for the elevation of the highway. The living shoreline portion of that project has funding from other sources. The sidewalk also has funding from other sources. I don't recall off the top of my head our, our total out on that, local funds, we can get that number for you.
From approximate numbers for the overall project, the town would have about $240,000 in about a $2.6 million overall project for those three components that Mr. Havens just mentioned. So with that in mind, so we would be paying for less than 10% of that if we obtain the brick grant. If we're not successful in obtaining that grant, then what has been discussed with the council in the past is that there, we likely would not be proceeding with the elevation project at this time. We would go ahead with the other components that have other funding sources, but we would not proceed with the elevation, so that, that money would not be spent unless council decides otherwise, of course.
And what's our percentage on the other fund, on the other components?
We have a 50% match on the living shoreline, so that's $384,000 from, and change, from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and the same amount from the town, and then we have $170,000 approximate grant from the Dare County Tourism Board for the sidewalk portion of the project. That is not as high a percentage as they've given us in past years, but it's still a substantial thing. We'd be looking at another, that's the one I don't have right offhand, it, just, a little less than $300,000 that we would have-- less than $300,000 that we would have in that. So total, we would have somewhere between $650,000, $700,000, I believe, in costs, if we don't get the brick grant to pursue those, those two aspects of the project.
Let's take another different look and perspective at this. First of all, we have the multi-path. That's an ongoing project from a standpoint of improvements every year. So we funded that this year, and in future years. We have the new one now to restart rebuilding some of the retaining walls, which are coming down. The living shoreline was always an approved project, and Phase Four of the Comprehensive Pedestrian Plan, which is that sidewalk piece, was approved. So we're moving forward with everything that's been previously approved and budgeted by council. The only thing that's different and raises the dollar amount is the brick project, which is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, perhaps, if we get it approved. If not, that expenditure goes away, and we go back to the original projects and the cost. So it's not that, in fact, we're ignoring something old for something new, the older approved projects.
Well, I understand approved projects, but sometimes you have to alter things.
What, I mean?
I'm just throwing it out there, you know what I mean?
I understand that.
This is the kind of thing that we need to talk about, I think, in a more present context. Everybody's concerned about revenue, and so even though we approve things, or the council approved things, a few years ago, they may no longer be the right thing to do.
I'd just like to say, we've been approving the projects annually as we approve capital improvements, or, you know, discuss capital improvements. And the point that we, when we got the opportunity, when we tabled, we did table the projects that we're talking about here, the sidewalk Phase Four and the living shoreline projects that were, we discussed last year, we tabled all that because of the opportunity for the brick grant, which, as I think Joe just pointed out, if we get the brick grant, and I'm understanding that, what I've heard is that we're the number-one project in the state, but again, there's a big if. If we get the brick grant, then we would, our allocation of expenses would go down from something like 600, 700,000 down to the 200 range. So it's a really good thing to see how it all plays out, and the town would really benefit that way. I'm not sure if we would, if we don't get the brick grant, then we would, I guess we would bring this back and bring this all up again and say, okay, now we're looking at this. But the, but the budget gets increased because of the brick grant, you know, because just like you have those red things where it's like a pass-through, it's money that we're not really spending ourselves, we're getting the benefit of a grant, and then we're, we're spending. And that's a lot like the beach nourishment, which also shows up as a total budget number for us, but is, you know, as included in our increased budget because of the projects that, like, including nourishment. So it really makes our budget look like it's going way up high, even though these are projects that, you know, like the, like the nourishment project is something that, obviously, we've discussed quite a bit, and is hopefully really been something that the public's been behind. So it looks like a big increase, but it's including the nourishment, too, as well as the brick grant. It gets all bundled up into the budget number. But I, you know, it's all good to continue to talk about, it's real money, no doubt about that.
Anybody else wish to get into that discussion about what we're spending on streets and highways and the brick grant? I think, Monica, you did a great job there, explaining it, and Drew, that a lot of that money that Rob's talking about is grant money that's in there. In the last five years, our budget has increased, it's been all for beach nourishment, the big shot of the increase.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say, I've always advocated for the sidewalks, because as Nancy and I know, before we became a town, that was the one thing that really galvanized us, was seeing, you know, was the need for some pedestrian access in our thoroughfare here, and that was what we taxed ourselves under, before we became a town, under Dare County. And I was pushing for some extra money when we had that really good price tag on, continuing to do additional project up in Sanderling, but we, I didn't get any other, we didn't get consensus on that last year. But it's always first in my, in my mind, and I think Sandy has that project you're talking about as the next one scheduled for improvement, you know, finishing up that whole section, as well as improving the stormwater. So I think that's, besides the bulkheads, I think this budget addresses that very area that you were talking about, or that you, public, the public has been talking to you about.
Yeah, we've also made some decisions in the past as a council. For instance, on the Phase Four of the sidewalk project affected Phase Three, because we cut that down from, I believe, a width of five feet to four feet, Joe, because in fact we were going to basically move forward with the west side sidewalk in Phase Four. So we've made some decisions in the past that kind of affect as we're going forward, too. So, you know, we designed that in favor of doing Phase Four as, you know, as an approved project moving forward. So there's a lot of considerations when you get into that, with respect to this whole brick grant and the impacts upon some of the other projects.
I appreciate the input and the discussion here. I think, you know, as we look at the CIP, you know, as we're working through that process with you in the coming year, it's a fair point. We, we want to continue to reinvest in what we already have, right? So to continue to make those improvements and ask the council to set your priorities, you know, in terms of capital funding, you know, if you want to put more towards that as opposed to new projects, that's certainly something you, will help you, will help you through those decisions by giving you the information that you request. But fair point, and good discussion.
Well, once again, for clarification, the only new projects we're talking about is Reasing the Road.
Correct.
Which is a one-time opportunity.
Yes, sir.
And probably the retaining walls on the multi-use path. Everything else is established project moving forward. So those are the only two things that really come in as new, other than more we've gotten grants like Resiliency and things like that.
Well, I think another thing that comes up as new is the addition of the one full-time maintenance person, and that goes to maintaining what we have as well, and being able to hopefully save money down the road as opposed to having contract help.
Absolutely. But the retaining walls aren't new, they're being replaced, though. They're already there, that's not new stuff, that's, again, maintenance.
Yeah, that's maintenance, too. Yeah. And then the public safety folks that round out the additional costs of the increased budget.
Other questions for Ms. Havens? Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, if there are members of the public present who would like to come forward and make a comment on the budget, if you'll come forward and state your name and address, please.
Go for it, Ben.
Come on, Ben.
Do you read the public?
Charlie?
We've got public.
I'm in public or a public?
Thank you, Ben.
First off, thank you for having the building open and so on and so forth. It feels good to be back, especially without one of these things. I have a hard time making things brief, but I will try to do as brief as possible. Hopefully, it might point us through. I guess my first part with the budget, I hope there's nothing passed tonight. I'll start with that, because I've tried hard with my work schedule to work in and try to look at this 200 and some odd page document and saying, okay, look at this to that year to this year, and what happened there, what happened there. Then I found myself on the website, I'm not sure if it's an issue with my computer or just in general, but on the website, there's a 2021 budget thing with links. You click on it, takes you to, and you click on again to whatever you want to look at. But then you have to back out to go look at another part of it. You can't just jump from one to the other. And then I actually had a very hard time looking for previous budget, other than what's in the document that's in the current budget thing, so on and so forth. So there's, I just say, I like to fact-check. And right now, I'm relying on one document to give me the facts of previous years, and I hate to say it, people, we're human, we make mistakes. And when you're creating a new document, there could be a number, I hate to say it, when you're missing it by $100,000, $50,000, to me, that's a lot of money, and so on and so forth. So it was very hard for me to swallow, okay, how do I find the actual document that said this is what we paid? And to fact-check that what's in this new budget is actually the true factual numbers that are being presented to us. I'm sure they are to the best ability of the people that created it, but it's hard for me, out being in the public, to like, fact-check. That's about, that's the way I can put it. So again, with my limited time, I started looking at one, and some of the things that kind of stood out to me, and I hate, it's not personal or anything of this nature, but hit it right on the nose, you got public safety, fire police, and I'll say, I found it good to follow highway in there, but I guess with that project you mentioned, that makes sense then. But I just started looking at the one because of my time constraint, and one of the things that really stood out to me was, there was what, actual, requested, and then what's on to date, or something like that. There was $400,000 difference between what was asked and what was actual. And basically, that budget, and I could be corrected, and so on and so forth, that it was basically the fire part was like 1.3 or 1.2, so I'll call it a third or a fourth of the budget. There was a big between actual, requested, and so I'm like, that's, that's a huge, how do you, how do you get from that number down to $400,000 less? And it just, that just stood out to me. And that's, so, budgets that I've had to do and pass, and so on and so forth, if I asked for 37% more, my boss would be looking at me and saying, what's, what's going on here? You know, that's a big, I don't want to call it a red flag or anything like that, but that's just one of the things I noticed. Again, it's short time, looking at too much information, that's just one of the things I kind of picked out of my head. And I'll say finally, because I think we have a three-minute time limit, and I don't see the clock up, so I've got to be getting close to that three minutes. The other thing is, I was very happy to see these other HOAs and stuff jumping in here and making comments and so on and so forth. This helped me kind of also try to direct my fact-finding to make sure that what's out there is true, so on and so forth. But this, this was very exciting, and I'm very, very happy to, and I won't say their last names, but Bob, Ron, and Jim, from those people putting that stuff together, and I look forward to seeing the answers out on that form and stuff. That was, I'm very excited to see that. And I think my three minutes must be up, but I don't see the clock. Thank you, and good luck.
Thanks.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I should have said this to you. Through all these processes, and this whole season, and so on and so forth, hopefully everybody has, what I think we're going to need to get through this season is understanding and patience. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody wants to clarify on fire, but what was, what was the actual and what was requested, and basically the split between personnel and the radios, that pretty much makes up that 400K, the additional personnel, and then, once again, we're going to new radios because the county changed the system on us. So that's where that, that huge jump of 400K, I'm just looking at the budget here quickly, the majority of that.
In a good way, it was less.
Oh, he's
Or not, less than.
Oh, no, I understand that. But what I'm saying, the increase is new radios and new personnel, and as well as adjustment of personnel, of salaries.
Sorry.
And wouldn't some of that have been the requested, to where we included the, the public safety building, and then we removed it? So that could have been the big, a big difference as well.
There, there was actually the previous year, like, 500,000 for the public safety?
Because we've been
Don't hold me to this number, but there was a big number we spent, and I want to say it was on architecture.
No, we didn't really spend it. We had 450,000 sitting out there in anticipation of spending it, and we did not put it in the budget this year, we basically have left it in the general fund.
Yeah, we've been keeping it in the budget for years, and we took it out this year.
So that could be the difference.
I think that's it.
Can we take comments that might come in through the Zoom?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Christian if there are any comments through Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, so Christian says, no public comments received on this, for this hearing through Zoom at this point. So any other public comments? Any other, sorry. Okay. So it sounds like there are no more public comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then, as I understand it, you're going to have a, another workshop at the mid-month meeting, so then you'll be presumably deferring your action until that time, or some later time prior to July 1.
That is correct, Robert, so.
Can I, and I'll, can I just make a clarification, too?
Yes.
That, yes, we'll have a, the Zoom will be, people will be able to come in on Zoom for the mid-month, even though they won't be able to make comments.
That's correct.
They will be able to watch it live that day. So it'd be great to take advantage of that if people are following it. And then, to reiterate what the mayor said, the questions that came in from the Homeowners' Association forum are going to be addressed in, I believe, you know, by the town manager with input from the council, and they're going to be posted on the website, just so everyone's real clear on that, that everyone will be able to see responses to this lengthy, you know, question, questionnaire that'll hopefully clarify a lot of things.
That is, that is correct, and in the future, they'll be able to still watch on YouTube, even though the Zoom will be shut off once come, July, but
Okay.
Be a working session, they'll be able to watch it through Zoom, but eventually it'll be YouTube.
Live, live YouTube, or just?
It'll be live YouTube, yes.
Oh, good. Oh, I thought it was, I was getting, I'm glad to hear that. Great. I was getting the impression it wasn't going to be live anymore. Okay, good.
So no further discussion on that, Robert is correct, we will readdress this. We're going to have additional information from Ken Wilson on the beach renourishment, and we'll have the workshop on the 16th and more, if required, as we move towards adoption on July 1, June 30. All right, moving on to item number 4B, the public hearing. Public hearing discussion consideration of Ordinance 21-01, amending Chapter 156 zoning ordinance for the town of Duck, North Carolina, for consistency with NCGS Chapter 160D. Let's turn it over to our town attorney, Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we will open the public hearing on Ordinance 21-01. At this time, there will be a presentation by Joe Hurd on behalf of the town staff.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. And let me just ask you a question, if I could, right off the bat. We have a couple public hearings scheduled, as we discussed last month at the council meeting. There are two public hearings, two ordinances that are related in terms of what I'd like to cover, and I just wanted to be sure that there's no particular issue, that we don't have to have two separate public hearings to cover the issue, like, that I have to repeat everything, or if I can just go through the presentation one time as it relates to both of the ordinances.
What you can do is, what I would suggest is to have, still have the two public hearings, but you would have your presentation during the first public hearing, and then for the second public hearing, you could just indicate that you've made a presentation already, and that you can, the members can refer back to that presentation for purposes of the second ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Without having to repeat at all.
And Mayor Kingston, does that work for you?
That works for me, yes, and the council.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of council, members of the public in attendance and joining us via Zoom as well. We have for you this evening, as summarized earlier, is a, a couple of public hearings, both of which are related to ordinance changes that are coming up as a result of changes our state legislature made to chapter, with the creation of Chapter 160D of the our state legislature made to chapter, with the creation of chapter 160D of the North Carolina general statutes. Basically, that, that change recodified all of the municipal and county development regulations. It was an effort that had not been done in, in many decades. So it resulted in cleaning up a lot of things, trying to make things consistent across the board for all municipalities and counties throughout the state that deal with zoning and development issues. So I'll begin by just stating for the record that this public hearing was given proper notice, advertised May 16th and 30th in the Coastland Times, also advertised on the town's website as well as posted properly here at Town Hall. So to further summarize what we're here to talk about this evening during this presentation, we have, again, the legislature went through this process that involved input over a period of over half a decade from its inception to the time that it finally got adopted by the state legislature, included input from a great variety of stakeholders, everyone from the UNC School of Government, leagues, municipalities, as well as counties, attorneys, planners, contractors, developers, all those, the organizations that represent those interest groups were all involved in this process. And the way this worked is that the changes that were proposed are the changes that the state bar association who led this effort could reach consensus on, that when they talked with all these different groups, these were the changes that everyone agreed would be positive changes, would help clarify things. And so those are the things that were included. Anything that was controversial or where there was a dissension, you know, different opinions on something, they just pushed that to the side and that was not, was no longer part of that process. So these were adopted and municipalities and counties were given an extension after they were adopted, but we're now required to have these adopted by July 1, 2021. So we've pushed that as late as we can for a variety of reasons, but I did want to just present an overview of what we're looking at tonight. So looking at the PowerPoint presentation, we've covered that first part there. The main things that this, these changes accomplish are uniform terminology and procedures. So it really sets up a, what do we call certain things? So everyone is speaking the, the same language, if you will, across the board. One of the examples of this in our ordinance changes is we, we presently, I guess I could use that term for another hour, presently have conditional use permits and we have special exceptions. Those are two different types of quasi judicial processes that we use here in the town of Duck. Those terms and those processes will no longer exist. It will now all become what's called a special use permit. And so some of the changes in the ordinance reflect that change to that common wording. When we talk about the procedures, the, one of the things the, the changes did was establish a consistent set of procedures. This is how municipalities across the state have to treat this type of issue. And we'll, we'll get into that in just a little, little bit here. Here's what, here's what I'm talking about with that last comment. So basically of three different types of decisions that as a town we make, administrative decisions. So these are the things where you as a council establish a set of development standards. And a great example for this would be residential properties and single family residential. We have setbacks, lot coverage, building height, a variety of different standards that people have to meet. But if they meet them, a property owner doesn't have to come to you to get approval. That can be done administratively. And this is typically done for the types of situations. We have things that you have a lot of permits and it would just be overwhelming for a, a council or planning board to have to deal with that. So you have a staff that deals with that for you on a day-to-day basis according to the standards that you've established. So those are administrative decisions. Legislative, that's what we're doing right now, text amendments and rezoning. So that's where you are considering establishing or changing ordinances for this town. So you're setting the standards, you're, you're defining which properties are commercial or residential, things like that. That is your decision, but it's a legislative decision which has a different process as far as the, the hearings and how you can get input and all of that. And the third type is quasi judicial. So these are things that are typically a little bit more site-specific decisions that, once again, the, the council in Duck has chosen to be the body that makes the final decision. You do have options on that, just so you're aware of that for the future. But here in Duck, you have a, you've, you've chosen to have a planning board review the, for development standards, make a recommendation, and then you as a council make the final decision in those cases. These are, as you're aware, a little bit tighter in terms of, a little bit more like a, a court case or a legal type of decision would be in terms of people having to be sworn in to give testimony, being presented with evidence, that type of thing. And so what you're looking at there are conditional use permits, special exceptions. You also have another board that does this as well, and that is your board of adjustment that deals specifically with variances and appeals of decisions. Those are also quasi judicial. So the amendments that we see in the ordinance with this, with the state statute are that, again, conditional use permits, things we had for waivers or exceptions are no longer allowed. The other types of decisions there in the middle, those conditional use permits, special exceptions are now special use permits. And finally, the, the last one as it relates to subdivision, which will be the, the second ordinance, the, the one we'll talk about, we're, we're focusing more on the zoning ordinance with this hearing, but the second hearing relates to subdivision ordinance and those changes. Those are converted to an administrative process. So again, you as a council set the standards. If a developer, property owner decides to submit for a subdivision, that is now an administrative process under this proposal. So that would be a staff review. And again, just another way of summarizing what I just went over as far as the, the different types of processes and, and who's responsible for each of those and what their Just to touch on a few highlights for the, the first public hearing with the zoning As you can see there, again, we just changed certain references to be more consistent. There are a number of definitions in the state statute that needed to be added to our ordinance. Some things that probably won't be particularly relevant to us revolving, involving exception exemptions for farm operations. Again, we've talked about the special use permits. There were a couple of other things that, yeah, I'm looking down this, this section of bullet points. There were updates in the wording in the state statutes as they relate to conflicts of interest, relating to the findings that have to be made for variances, not, not significant changes, but we did need to tweak the wording in our ordinance to match the state legislation, notification processes, and a comprehensive plan consistency statement. That's something that we're going to have to do a little bit more formally moving forward when we have a, whether it's a text amendment or whether it's looking at a, a special use permit, we would have to have a certain statement talking about whether the council found it was consistent and do that a little bit more formally than we have in the past. So that's what I wanted to focus on for the zoning ordinance, the, the first one. And then while I'm up here and going through this presentation, we did also have some similar changes within our subdivision ordinance. Again, the most significant of those is that some of the processes that are presently set up to be reviewed by planning board and town council as far as a plat review will now be provisions that would, they would be the responsibility of the subdivision administrator, they would be administrative review. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, this, although this is a very significant thing for most communities throughout the state, a very significant change for Duck, it's probably not going to mean a whole lot because we just don't have a lot, if, if any, property that has the potential to be subdivided further. So it's unlikely this will, this change would cause us any, any particular issue. And that concludes my, my summary there. So I did want to start again, just talking about that first ordinance you have before you, 21-001, that deals with changes to the zoning ordinance. And during their consideration of the proposed amendments at their meeting on April the 14th, the Duck Planning Board had a lot of conversation about these changes and following that voted unanimously to recommend approval of these text amendments to ensure consistency with standard development practices and bring the town code into compliance with NC general statutes, chapter 160D. I did also want to just mention to the council that should these ordinances be adopted, this first zoning ordinance and then the subdivision, there will be additional steps that we will have to take. There'll be some other things that are going to come before you in future months. You'll be asked to appoint a subdivision administrator and a zoning administrator. That would like, you know, be my position or designee is probably the way we would word those. We would have to go back and re-adopt a zoning map, a, a official zoning map. We will have some minor tweaks to the wording of the fee schedule that we hope to have before you for the mid-month meeting. It doesn't change any of the content or numbers or figures, but as mentioned, we no longer, we would no longer have conditional use permits, so we need to correct that, things like that, as well as a, a template for creating these consistency statements with the plan and a whole slate of new application forms that the staff would prepare for applicants. So just so you're aware of the other things that would be involved with this if these changes are made. So again, we have the board's recommendation regarding the zoning ordinance, ordinance 21-001. And that concludes my presentation, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council members might have.
Joe, I have a quick question. It's, it's really a little bit off the subject because you really explained this well and we've certainly, not the first time we're seeing this. But in the, I, I get that the, that these ordinances or these, this, you know, the definitions and everything haven't been reviewed, as you said, in decades. And so the intent is to kind of have this standardization across the state, which is certainly, you know, makes a lot of sense. And my question was really just, do the counties also have to do this, counties level or do you know?
Yes, they, this, this actually consolidated the, the municipal and county, right, you used to have two different chapters, if you will, or I guess one was 160A, 160B. And it consolidated those into this. So yes, the, the answer, that's yes, it will also include all counties.
Great, okay, thank you.
Joe, I have a quick question. So your observation about us not having a lot of subdivisions being plotted out is, is true, but I just want to double check if I understand. So if we, if two lots combined, would that be administrative?
That is already administrative.
That is administrative.
We have the, the minor subdivisions, like, like if somebody is, has a large lot and they're dividing it into two lots, for instance, both with road frontage and all that. If they, if they meet the standards that this council has established, you know, for lot width, the size of the lot, things of that nature, then it is already what's called an exempt plat under state law. And we, we mirror that wording in our current ordinance and obviously in the proposed ordinance as well. So most of those little things where you have owners, sometimes we have owners who trade off a piece of property for, for different reasons. You know, occasionally we'll have someone who's done something where they now encroach on their neighbor a few feet and they agree to a property, you know, I'll give you a five foot strip here and you give me a five foot strip there. And, and if it works out, that's, you know, that's great, you know, that's between them. But again, that's, that kind of little thing is an exempt plat or a very minor subdivision like that, or combining lots in a, in a different way, you know, like that. And any of those are already exempt and it, and technically it's not even administrative approval. It's, they're exempt. So they can be recorded at the county. We do have a stamp just showing that we looked at it to be sure that it complied with whatever other standards we have, but technically we don't even approve those as a staff.
And a reclassification, like a rezoning, switching, I'm just making this, I don't know, you know, village commercial to residential, that would come to us?
Nothing changes at all regarding rezonings and text amendments and that kind of thing other than, you know, little pieces of wording in it. The, the standards, the process are identical to what they are today.
Thank you.
Joe, two questions. At the end of your presentation, you said if adopted, if not adopted, we're going to be out of compliance with state regulation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's a no-brainer, right?
So, and, and just as a functional matter, we would be required by law to enforce the state law. We, we cannot supersede state law with our own, you know, our own wishes, so.
The second part of that, do you see this as streamlining the process? In fact, you know, levitating planning board, town council, and maybe even your staff, some of the burden that they, they have today? Is the process, do you think the process could be more streamlined or?
As regarding subdivisions, yes. There's no longer that multi-step process involved with that. The other aspects of it, they're pretty much the same as they are now. I mean, it really, it really doesn't change the, the current processes for the other types of applications.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Joe. At this time, I will open this up for members of the public who would like to speak to this proposed ordinance. If you have a comment, please come up, state your name and address. Actually, I have to apologize first. Ben Vordren, 104 Seahawk Drive West here in Duck. And I'm sorry, Joe, I'm not sure if I overheard it correctly. Did you say there's going to be, need of three new positions to fill out the, the, you said something about additional assignment of somebody to watch over the subdivisions or something of, I was trying to catch.
No.
No, okay.
Nothing like that.
Just want to make sure I heard correctly.
No, I mean, they're, they're very infrequent, so it doesn't.
Yeah.
It doesn't put any significant burden on staff.
That's it. I just make sure I caught that. Thank you.
Ben, I think what you might have missed, I think what you might have heard was that there's going to be a requirement to designate someone on the planning staff to be the zoning administrator, the subdivision administrator, but it's not a. administrator, the subdivision administrator, but it's not a new position that will be created, just be an identified member of staff doing that role.
Christian, any comments or presentations from Zoom? Okay, so no comments from Zoom on the proposed ordinance. Any final comments or questions before the public hearing is closed? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing on this ordinance 21-01. I'd like to remind the council that you're sitting as a legislative body for this proposal. I'll also remind you that in order to adopt the ordinance at the first reading, it requires a supermajority vote, which in, in your case is four members of the council would need to approve in order to approve it at the first reading. So at this point, I'll turn it over to you for your deliberation.
Thank you, Robert. Any further deliberation on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we consider ordinance 21-01, amending Chapter 156 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Duck, North Carolina for consistency with North Carolina's general statute, Chapter 160D.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Portem Thibodeau?
Aye.
Councilmember Mooney?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Aye.
The ordinance has passed five to zero. With that, we'll go on to this public hearing discussion consideration of ordinance 21-02, amending Chapter 155 subdivision ordinance for the town of Duck, North Carolina for consistency with NCGS Chapter 160D. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for ordinance 21-02. At this time, Joe, would you like to make a presentation? And like we discussed earlier, you can incorporate your previous, previous presentation into this public hearing.
Thank you. Mayor Kingston, at the advice of our town attorney, I would like to just note for the record that this, this particular ordinance was also advertised on the same dates as the, the previous ones, so this public hearing is appropriately advertised. I have offered a presentation that covered all of the points I would make as it relates to this ordinance, that I would refer you to that. And if you have any further questions as they relate to the subdivision aspects of the ordinance, you know, I'd be welcome to answer any of those. But at that same meeting in April, the Planning Board did review and has unanimously voted to recommend approval to you to adopt this ordinance that would similarly change Chapter 155, the subdivision ordinance of the town for consistency with NC General Statutes, Chapter 160D.
Questions for Joe? If there are any members of the public who would like to address this ordinance, if you'll come forward, state your name and address, please. Seeing none? Christian, any comments or presentations from Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, none from Zoom. Any final comments or questions? All right, at this point, then I'll close the public hearing and again remind you that you're sitting as a legislative body. In order to adopt the ordinance at the first reading, it would need to be a supermajority vote, which in your case means that you would have to have at least four members of your council to vote to approve the ordinance.
Thank you, Robert. Any further deliberation? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 21-02. Got my glasses. Amending Chapter 155 subdivision ordinance for the town of Duck, North Carolina for consistency with the North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160D.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Portem Thibodeau?
Aye.
Councilmember Mooney?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Aye.
The ordinance has passed five to zero. Going on to the next public hearing, public hearing discussion consideration of ordinance 21-03, amending subsection 156.124C1 of the zoning ordinance by establishing allowances for the installation of post and rail or post and rope structures on dune walkovers in the beach nourishment area. Once again, I'll turn that over to our town attorney, Robert Hobbs.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on ordinance 21-03, and we'll start with a presentation by Joe Hurd on behalf of the town staff.
Right, thank you, Mr. Hobbs. Mayor Kingston, as before, I did want to note for the, begin by noting for the record that this public hearing was appropriately advertised, again, May 16th and 30th in the Coastland Times, as well as on the town's website and here at Town Hall. The proposed ordinance is seeking to maintain prior allowances for beach access matting, but also add additional allowances for the installation of post and rail and post and rope structures over the top and down the east side of the primary oceanfront dune of the town in the beach nourishment project area to provide greater physical support for people with limited mobility who might be accessing the beach in that area. Additionally, the proposed ordinance would require removal of any portion of those post and rail or post and rope structures that extend eastward of the toe of the dune. So in other words, if we see erosion of the dune itself back, the owners would over, you know, when it reaches a certain point, would have to pull that structure back somewhat, you know, remove a small piece of it and reestablish it, or in instances where it would potentially interfere with beach nourishment or dune maintenance project. So that is the intent of what you have with you this evening, and I'd like to just really quickly walk through, it's just a little bit briefer version of the presentation from last month, but for those folks joining us, particularly on Zoom or others who may not be familiar with the, the issue, hopefully this will give them some context and help them understand. So if you, let me walk through that briefly, I'll go ahead and do that. So first of all, when we talk about dune walkovers, we're talking about some form of improvement that is getting people from the west side of our relatively tall dunes here in Duck to the east side where the beach is. You know, prior to our beach nourishment project back in 2017, we had dunes that looked like this in that project area. You can see relatively steep, you can see the necessity for those significant, you know, more formal structures with, you know, built walkways coming down, stairways coming down to get you down to the beach. Those would be extremely difficult for someone to try to walk, particularly walk up, but even down is difficult when it's at that slope. So following our beach nourishment project again in 2012, 2017, this is what we ended up with, a much broader beach, high, tapered down at a one-to-five slope. Yeah, but that slope is not a, a permanent feature, and we, we were aware of that and knew that, but at the time, we took the opportunity to evaluate what this meant for people trying to access the beach. We identified a handful of concerns from, you know, doing some, you know, getting some public input as it related to this particular issue, and found that these were significant concerns that were worthy of consideration. The council, in, in looking at that, had adopted the set of standards that are what we have today. That is on the west side, a property owner, and that includes the common accesses, you know, that are like neighborhood beach accesses, as well as individuals can do pretty much anything on the west side as far as bringing up a, a walkway, beach access matting, things of that nature. But then when they get to the top of the dune where things are a little bit more sensitive, you know, we're particularly in the immediate aftermath of the project, we had lots of small plants that we were trying to encourage their growth to get them established to help stabilize those dunes. We didn't want a lot of improvements on it that would interfere with that. And that was one of the main reasons we took a look at allowing beach access matting that would come over the top, be allowed on the top and down the east side. Just another example there in the lower right corner, you can see kind of how that, that works there, where we've overlaid that. This is what we're talking about when we're talking about beach access matting and what's presently allowed on that over the top and west side. Just a little chart here about different things that are permitted in different areas. In other areas of town, the other 4.3 miles of oceanfront that we have, they're not subject to these restrictions and can do some of these other alternatives. But in that beach nourishment area, presently, we're only allowing the matting, but as you can see in that right-hand column, what's being proposed today is the addition of options allowing post and rail or post and rope structures. Okay. So we're talking about post and rail, this is what we're talking about. The extension that you see there to the, in the picture to the right is a side view of it, so it would allow posts and a single rail going across the top to not interfere with the flow of sand underneath it, that, you know, not to capture that sand, but allow those processes to continue. And we're talking about post and rope, this is what we're referring to there, where you would just have individual posts with rope going between it. And obviously, that option does not offer as much structural support, you know, or support for somebody trying to use it to, to lean on, to, to help their way up, but either of those would be options that communities or individual property owners can, can use under this proposal. So that's what we're talking about with this, is just adding those alternatives to the, the toolbox for property owners. This would not take away any existing rights that anybody has, it would simply add other options for people to use in the beach nourishment area. At its public meeting on April the 14th, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this proposed text amendment permitting construction of post and rope and post and rail structures in that, in the beach nourishment project area. And that concludes my presentation for you this evening, but I'd be glad to answer any questions the council might have.
Joe, I have one, in fact, in that picture, the one you just had, with the post and rail. Now, could they extend that post and rail further down? How do you determine the toe, the toe of the dune which could recede over time? Do you establish that, or would we do it on trust?
We do have a, Sandy Cross and I are both designated as, are both certified as KAMA local permit officers, so we would be involved in, in making that determination on where the toe of the dune is.
So like in that picture there on the right, you can't really tell where the toe is, but it looks like it's got three extensions going down.
What we would, yeah, well, and what we would look at, you know, again, the, the dune, you know, dune, as you're well aware, we've, we've looked at this issue several different times over the years since these standards were originally adopted. And, you know, there are cases where, you know, there are instances where the dune will grow outward for a period in certain sections, and there, there are times when it might erode, you know, depending on storms, depending on what's happening offshore. You might have a hotspot, you know, we have one that moves, has been moving south now for a number of years on the southern part of town there, you know, where it causes problems for greater erosion for a year or two in certain areas, but then continues south. So all of that being said, you know, there are going to be instances where it erodes back, and the intent of this is not to have structures that stick out, that interfere with people, you know, that become safety issues, if you will, you know, with people who are using the flat beach there. And so in those instances, we would advise an owner that they would have to take out, just as an example here, they might, you know, if it eroded back more, they might have to take out that first section. And they could, you know, they would be well advised to keep those posts and those rails handy somewhere, because, you know, a year later, they may, you know, they may want to put them back if the, if the conditions have changed. So that's the key to these, and I think that's one of the important components. The Planning Board had a lot of discussion about the issue of what to do with these structures, when we, we mentioned the impacts with the potential beach nourishment projects or even the town's annual, seemingly annual maintenance, where, where we have to grade out some of the accesses and areas where you see escarpments that are a little more significant, and we, you know, grade that out so people have a safe way to walk down. In those areas, they can be removed and replaced very easily. You know, you can take them out, project occurs, put it back in. And it's, it's relatively inexpensive, they're not, you know, it's not like, you know, a more substantial structure, you know, like what we looked at here at the beginning here, where that could cost many thousands, if not, you know, $10,000 in some instances for a stairway with heavier railings and all of that. These are much simpler solutions for the owner, much less expensive.
Yeah, you just answered my second question. I was going to ask you if there was significant escarpment, and we pull down the access, they can then run the rail down the access, maybe pass the escarpment, or would you make them stop at the escarpment?
I mean, if the escarpment was the new toe, in other words, if we brought it down into the beach, which, which happens, you know, because the rest of it is still in escarpment, but if we're bringing that down, you know, the, the point of this is for people going up the access to be able to have something. So we, we would allow that, we would consider that to be the toe rather than the rest of the dune where, where they don't have the access.
Thank you.
Joe, I have a question. The, so the process would be that the subdivision or the entity would come to the town to get a permit for construction of this, and then they would be subject to a, the, for the permit?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they would have to get a permit, I'd have to think about, I don't know, yeah, I, I mean, I think there would probably be a fee, if nothing else, for the KAMA part of it.
KAMA part, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, but that, that's what would be involved.
Fairly straightforward.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe. At this point, if there are any members of the public who would like to make a presentation or make comments on this proposed ordinance, if you'll come forward and state your name and address. Actually, I wasn't expecting to make a comment on this, but I guess I need to correct it. My understanding, when thing came up with, we had the problem with the beach nourishment, all the sand was coming up on the top of the walkways, and then there was a thing of 16 inches you were allowed to remove? I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but you were not allowed to move it toward the ocean, you can only move it to the side or away from the ocean. And so I'm a little confused, did I hear correctly? They took sand from above and brought it back toward the ocean for, where the, I guess the access thing was or some, I don't, I'm, I'm really confused of why one's allowed and the other's not.
The, where you had the escarpments, the town went in to grade out the access points to bring it down, you know, so it wasn't, you didn't have the escarpment in those areas where the access was. Okay. So that's how it, you know, that's how it played, it was just graded down to come in directly to the beach.
The where the sand comes from, to come from the, was it a beach porch to get it up to the?
No, no, not definitely.
I guess again, my concern again. I guess again, my concern again was I thought you, you were never allowed to bring it toward the ocean due to contaminants.
Okay. And we can, we can discuss, we can show you some examples off. Now, that doesn't relate to their ordinance at all, but we can, we'll get you some information on that if you'd like. I can show you some specific examples of how that played out.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian, any comments from Zoom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any remaining comments or questions? Okay, at this point, we'll close the public hearing. Just to remind the council, you're sitting as a legislative body for this proposal. And again, as, as with the others, a super majority vote of four members or more would be required to adopt this ordinance at its first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Any further deliberation? There is none, I'll undertake a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 23-03, amending subsection 156.124 C1 of the zoning ordinance by establishing allowances for the installation of post and rail or post and rope structures on dune walkovers in the beach nourishment area.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Protem Thibodeau?
Aye.
Councilmember Mooney?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Aye.
The ordinance is passed five to zero. I'm going to go on to item number 5A, old business items deferred from previous meetings. Discussion, consideration and planning board appointment. I will handle this. Let me just go through the summary. This is to reappoint Joe Bokitis or appoint a different individual to serve in a three-year term on the planning board ending on May 1st, 2024. At our May 19th, 2021 mid-month meeting, the council members were notified that the term of Joe Bokitis on the planning board expired May 1st, 2021. Council was asked to consider reappointing Mr. Bokitis. Following discussion of the appointment process, the council requests the staff to advertise the position, check with prior applicants and obtain applications from interested parties for the position. Five applications are received. Joe Bokitis, Bill Miosi, Jay Blos, John Puciano and David Flowers. Mr. Bokitis expressed an interest in being reappointed to the board. Mr. Blos, Mr. Miosi and Mr. Puciano previously applied for positions and expressed an interest in having their applications considered again. And Mr. Flowers is a new application for the planning board position. So at this point in time, if there's no further discussion, what we'll do is open up the floor for nominations for the planning board position.
I'd like to nominate Jay Blos. He's, he's got over 40 years of experience doing exactly the kind of work that we would require from him. I understand, I'm not, as I said when we, when I brought this subject up the last meeting, I'm not knocking Joe Bokitis, but he's been in that job for 14 years. How he got there is really not my concern, but reading through the applications that we have, it is, in my opinion, clear that Jay Blos has the most qualified CV. Everybody else has either worked in, in some sort of educational thing or are not full-time residents with large interest in what goes on in the town, as Jay has exhibited for at least three or four years now. So I don't want to make a mistake and not take advantage of what, in my opinion, is the most qualified candidate for the job.
Thank you, Rob. Other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Joe Bokitis.
Want to make any comments on him?
He's been here in the, in the town for over 15 years that I know of, and planning board chairman, existing planning board chairman at the present time.
Any additional nominations? There being none, we'll close nominations. Now, Robert, we do a, basically just a roll call vote?
That's right. I mean, at this point, you'll call for a roll of the members and each member shall vote according to your procedure. And the votes will then be tallied once each member has voted, and the nominee who receives the highest number of votes shall be appointed, according to your procedure.
So we'll basically do a roll call vote and Robert and Drew will keep count. So we'd like to start with councilmember Cavaness.
Joe Bokitis.
Councilmember Whitman?
Joe Bokitis.
Mayor Protem Thibodeau?
Difficult decision because I think Jay really has shown his commitment to the town and with attending meetings and has a lot to offer. But I will vote for Joe Bokitis for the fact that he has the experience on the board and has the institutional knowledge that I think is consistent with, with the town and, and his willingness to re-serv, I think, will serve the town well. I hope that doesn't discourage any of the other candidates from reapplying for other positions because I do believe that there's a great bit of experience here that we can all benefit from. But my vote will go for Joe for that reason.
Councilmember Mooney?
Obviously, I'm going to vote for Jay Blos. I, I just can't tell you how disappointed I am in the, the thought that because this is the way we've always done it, this is the way we should do it, and that's, that's what this amounts to. It's, that's just a disappointing position in my opinion.
The mayor, like, like Monica, we have some very good candidates here. I'm going to go over experience versus new to the board. But there will be, like any other board in the town, there are plenty of opportunities for turnover as the years progress, especially with the planning board where we turn over applicants or appoint applicants every year. So my vote will go for Joe Bokitis.
Confirming the vote.
Town attorney?
Joe Bokitis is appointed by four votes to one.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a couple of comments?
I'm sorry?
May I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
I just, I wanted to take this opportunity to say that volunteerism is really at the heart of who we are as a town. It's how we became a town. It's, before that, it was the glue that held the town together, whether it was people in the Duxific Association or the Fire Department or for people who had an active property owner For 19 years, we've been able to advance so much of what we dreamed of accomplishing thanks to volunteers. It, it's, it's who we are. We owe the people who have been willing to step up and contribute and collaborate, we owe them an enormous debt of gratitude. We would never have accomplished what we've accomplished without them. I think also part of who we are is that we've had an open process asking for people to introduce themselves to us, to express their willingness to contribute their time and their talent. And I know it's been a great avenue for people to meet one another, new people to the community. Not only has it allowed new people in the community to meet one another, but it's allowed us to meet people who have, you know, have skills to offer. And I think it's a great process and I just want to say that I'm very appreciative of it. I am very thankful of, of everybody who has volunteered for the town in multiple capacities and the people who put their name forward for this particular planning board appointment. I want to thank them too because it's a lot to step up and to be willing to contribute, which for the planning board is an extraordinary amount of time. But to that, I also think that we need, that I, I want to emphasize the importance of length of service. It is invaluable. Monica or someone alluded to the importance of institutional knowledge. I, we just can't underestimate or devalue in any way the invaluable wealth of experiences and context that is gained when we have a person serving on such an essential board, like the planning board. And all the context, all the specifics, all the background that's been behind some of the most crucial decisions that the town has had to make. And it's invaluable and I, I want to commend Joe for his length of service and, you know, that's why I'm supporting his nomination to continue in this role. I, I feel like we owe him thanks for his service and his leadership in the community. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Nancy. Any other comments by council? There being none, we'll move on to item number six, new business. We have none at this time. Moving on to item number seven, items referred to in presentations from the town attorney. Robert?
I have nothing this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Items referred to in presentation to town manager. Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll do the department head report, starting with Chief Ackerman this evening, and then Chief Black, Mr. Hurd and Ms. Legner, and myself.
Good evening, all. Promised to be brief this morning, this afternoon, rather. As you could tell from the traffic today, summer is here. I think it's been here for a few weeks. I've never seen it so busy so early before. And the challenge of the traffic is certainly going to be there with us through this year, the season, rather. As you'll see from our call volume, we're up about 65%, just over 65% from May over last year, which, if you remember, we were just kind of coming out of the, that phase of the pandemic, so not surprised there. But we're definitely seeing a call volume go up. In fact, the other night, we were just as busy as Gilbert Hills was. So it was definitely hopping. So it was nice to have the resources out. Traffic enforcements continue to be up. Traffic crashes, of course, are beginning to rise. We're seeing a lot of rear end minor collisions. Most of them are direct result of stop and go traffic or people crossing at the crosswalks and vehicles stopping suddenly. Business checks continue to be a high priority for us, especially at night. And then we didn't have many extra patrol requests this month. And then one D W B I rest, I believe. Just to talk briefly about where we are with our LPR system, continues to be probably our greatest crime fighting asset. We were set to replace both of the current LPR sites next year and the year after, not something that's contained in this year's budget. The estimated initial cost was upwards of $88,000. A lot has changed since we first put those systems in place and chose the vendor for them. And a new vendor has come on the scene and they really have been a game changer for things. They've brought the technology to a scale where it, it can be a whole lot cheaper and a whole lot more available. So what would have been $88,000, looks like it's going to be around $12,000 to accomplish the same thing with some added savings in there. The picture here is the technician from this company putting up a trial unit at our south site. We've been trying that for about the last three months. It's still up now, should be coming down shortly, but we are just ecstatic with the results that we've seen from that system. Some of the things that we really like about it, was it solar powered versus 110 powered, which would allow us to put it in the most optimal positions, where we located the current LPRs was strictly based on where Dominion would give us power. There's been a big challenge with us working with the legislature to try and get DOT to approve encroachment permits to put license plate readers on the right of way. That has failed every time it's come up in the legislature and there's no, in a foreseeable future, there's no chance of that passing. So we have to work with it the best we can and a solar system absolutely allows us to do that. This system's also powered or obtains its hot list information, NCIC information directly through the SBI in Raleigh versus the current system we are partnered with, high intensity drug trafficking area out of Houston, Texas. So that, that's something the company partners with, but we'd be able to control our own data here in house rather than it going out of state. What's nice about this, that system is a subscription-based pricing model, which is what we're seeing with most things now. So data is included in that. So that's a savings alone of about $2,000 a year between our two systems. We also would pay no annual software maintenance and warranty fees, which is another several thousand dollars that we pay to our current vendor. The data would remain fully, be fully shareable with all our law enforcement partners that are already doing this, and we would encourage them to, to move over to this technology as well. And I think there's a great interest in it. One of the things I love most about this company is it provides public-private partnerships that haven't existed with LPR technology. So this company has partnered with Collington Harbor Association. They now have fixed LPRs at the entrance, their gate. So that information's fully shareable to law enforcement. If any of the HOAs within town, business owners, parking lots, have an interest in these systems, they're very cost effective and we can partner with them to see that data. So something I'm excited with to be able to expand that technology. And then also with the, the solar portability, we can put them in more places that will, will address issues that we're having. So more to come on that. Really excited about what we've seen and where that's going and where LPR technology has gone. So from, from the onset of Operation Shield with Chief Kyoto and, and all the work we did on that, been a huge success for us and continues to be something we're going to pursue and, and maintain. Just briefly, the, all the data is up on the town website from LPR reads for May. Of course, we're beginning to see traffic increase, as I alluded to earlier and you all saw, to try and get here tonight. Before I wrap up, there's one thing I want to address and ask for everybody's help on. One of the things that's alarming that I've seen over the last couple of weeks or heard about is a number of incidents that have occurred in town where the homeowner or the victim didn't call us and tell us what was going on, heard about some things days later. And in order for us to connect the dots and, and solve crime, we really need those reports to come in real time to us. There's a misconception that it bothers us or they should wait till the next day. We work 24/7, 365. We're there. It's our job to take these calls. We want to get the information as fresh as we can to be able to solve crimes and, and deter crime. So please help me get that message out that people should call us. They can call 911, they can call our non-emergency number. Now that we've no longer using direct connect, all calls go directly through Dare Central and that ensures that we get them quickly. So, so I appreciate your help on that. And then lastly, just share some pictures from our training in our last staff meeting. Don't be alarmed, it's just Fred. So Fred is Christian's corn snake and she brought him in to do a presentation to us on snake handling. We, believe it or not, we get a lot of calls about snakes, especially in spring. So Christian taught us a little bit about identifying snakes, how to move snakes, how to handle snakes and, and Officer Gilroy's going to kill me, but he's terrified of snakes and he, so proud of him, he, he stood up and was the first in line to, to handle the snake. So Missy loves snakes. So I don't know, that's, it's crazy. Others were standing on tables. So, so any questions this evening?
I do, Chief. Back to that public-private partnership on the LPR readers, you mentioned Collington Harbor or other subdivisions or HOAs that might get them. Is the data that they, that go, you know, that's read, that still is all kind of on a private lockdown with the SBI or whoever's holding it? In other words, you know, the private entities are not going to become, you know, involved in the actual?
Selling the data and things like that? No, all LPR data that's captured in North Carolina is strictly, there are very clear laws in North Carolina that dictate how that information is stored, used and disseminated. So, so no, it's, it's, it's not going to become something like that.
Chief, back to your prior slide about the, the break-ins in crime. Should we not maybe increase our communications through our emails and Facebook and things like that?
I'll certainly be working with Christian on that. It's something we haven't had a chance to talk about yet, but I'm going to ask that we get that out, newsletters and, and blast that information out. But that's, it's been a, there's, there's just that misconception that we, that we work nine to five or something and, and we, you know, believe me, at two in the morning, we want something to do, so.
Chief, how many, how many times since last month have any of your people had to be on solo patrol?
I don't have the total number. We're reporting it weekly, so it should be on each week, but it's beginning to decline since we got Officer Kuhar and Davis through Beale T. They graduated, so they're now back full. They graduated, so they're now back fully on the street, so.
But theoretically, the two new additions are going to eliminate that as a problem.
Absolutely, yeah. I believe that we're proposing to stagger them July 1 and November 1. So my hope with the staffing plan that we put together is that I'll be able to come to you January 1 and tell you that that problem's been solved, and that I've got two out round the clock. So I think we've put together a really good staffing plan that's going to fill that, and as Drew said, no intention to come back and tell council that that problem hasn't been solved. Roughly, roughly what it's been is about five shifts a week on average, right now, which is five to...
Five shifts a week where there's only one cop down?
There's only one officer working, yes sir.
Are you fully staffed right now?
We're down, well, we lost one, we hired somebody right away. They started this week, so we're just waiting on state paperwork, but they're fully certified, ready to go, so the minute that paperwork comes in, we will be back at full staff. And then we, we're doing something right. We've got a pool of folks that have contacted us about the potential position, so I believe that we're going to be able to fill them with some very qualified candidates.
Thank you chief.
Thank you.
All right, good evening everyone. It's time for the May update for Duck Fire Department. And when I, you know, I love the data. When I flip these slides, it's, they're pretty impressive. The traffic is definitely telling a story, and so is our call volume. So when you look at our May call volume from last year, we went from 86 calls total last year to 155 so far this year. If you look across the board, 2017, we had 132 calls, so we're 20 calls above any year we've had yet. So that's a big difference from last year. We expected some, but definitely quite the increase. So when you look at the month, obviously the month helped. At 59 calls this month, still the most calls we've ever had in May before. So it'll be interesting to see, not hitting summer yet, what that will look like. Broken down by the types of calls, definitely Rescue 11 calls were up in May. That's probably the majority of differences in, if you look down here, and also when I put up the pie chart. So looking at May activities, like I reported, total incidents 59, 18 fire inspections, and 371 hours of training. We're just about done with fire inspections, and I looked it up real quick before I got up here. There's 190 occupancies that we have to inspect in town that require inspection. Some may be every three years, some may be annually. We've broken them out with Sandy to do about a third every year, so every three years. The ones that only require every three years, we're hitting, and then the ones we require annually. So when you see those inspections, it depends how many we do a year, but total in town that were required for at some timeframe is 190. Our firefighter process, as I told you last month, we were open, we had gotten, I think through the physical agility, and then we were scheduled to do four interviews. So we completed those interviews. We had a panel of firefighters, we had Lieutenant Mack on there along with a representation of our career staff. When they were done with that interview, they came over and had an interview with myself, one-on-one with the chief. Deputy Chief Bachelet was part of the panel interview. And we were able, we put an offer into one, and we hired our new hire, which is right here, which is Dave Seibert. I didn't realize when I took the picture, it was him and going to be who we ended up hiring, but he has a strong connection to Duck, in case you don't know. But let me tell you about Dave for a minute. Dave came to me probably just about a year ago and said, "I think I want to change careers and become a firefighter." And so we talked through it, we actually had multiple conversations, ended up meeting in early August, and I said, "If you're serious, now's the time." The Dare County Fire Academy was about to start in a new format. If he was serious, we wanted to get him going and see. And we had an annual meeting last night, and I brought this up. Couple of my firefighters were like, "Man, that's hard, he has no experience, you're going to throw him right into the academy, and then he's going to try to do time with us?" And I'm like, "If he's serious, we'll see." And this weekend, Dave will complete that firefighter one and two program. It's really hard to do in one year. I think he's feeling it now, as Christian knows, but he got through. He was up against others that had more experience, and he flourished. Part of the reason he flourished is, one, he's a little older, so he's mature, but two, with the training he got internally with our firefighters. He was in there working on his skills since August and really shined at the end. So really excited to have him on board. At a future meeting, we'll bring in any of the staffing changes once we go forward. The other thing with the summer coming, we have started the Dare County EMS Now Standby Memorial Day to Labor Day. So I was able to work with Chief Collins this year. Instead of us checking traffic cams on the weekends and seeing if it's okay, it's just a standing order. So Saturdays and Sundays, they will deploy to Duck Fire at a time that's convenient with their scheduling. We're trying to do it around lunch because they missed that southern exodus that we're seeing, really saw this weekend, and they'll stay till the traffic dies down. They were there both days. It does depend on calls, and it will depend on availability, but they were able to make it up both days.
They were there both days this past weekend?
Yes, yep. They were there longer on Saturday. We actually had a call on Sunday, and then once they deployed for that call, they didn't need to come back. So what I'm doing, as we are in our 39th year, going to 40th, I'm going to highlight two volunteers every month. So last month, it was, and the way I'm doing it is by seniority and time in. So last month, you were introduced, if you didn't already know, Pat and Rick, which pretty much everyone in town I think knows Pat and Rick, and I think you're going to know the next two as well. So Pat and Rick about had the equal amount of time on. And then next active person in the fire department actually sits with you all is Nancy. Nancy's been with the fire department for 22 years, and when she started, she started with a couple of other folks as a support firefighter to help with rehab, because we were all going all to these, all these fires, it was hot, and there's a few people going, "Well, who's giving you water? Who's giving you drinks?" And that actually started our support firefighter program. Her and a couple of other folks that aren't with us anymore, started doing that, like, "Okay, we'll just help with rehab," and that transitioned into pulling blitz lines and helping on the fire ground, and it really changed how we were able to operate with our particular demographic. As you know, she does our social media and helps as the t-shirt administrator for our t-shirts sales. So thank you for your 22 years as you are sitting here. And you all will know our next volunteer in Bob Mack. Bob Mack has 17 years with us, he serves as our vice chair, and he's also lieutenant in the fire department, and I have a million pictures of Bob Mack. I chose the one on the left because Bob's put in his time, and he's like, "I love wearing an air pack, but I'm done." And I think that picture captures it. So he is really transitioning for us as more driver operator and mentor for the fire department, and we appreciate all he's done. So those are my volunteer highlights this month. Last night was our annual board meeting for the Duck Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated. Our board going forward is Chair Pat Scarlett, Vice Chair Bob Mack, and Secretary Treasurer is Kent Zermmerman. I want to thank Drew for coming last night. He came at the beginning of the meeting and addressed the entire membership and said a few words, and I appreciate you coming up and doing that. The next slide is a difficult slide, we're all watching the news, but this is especially upsetting to the fire service world today. I just want to at least acknowledge the incident that happened in LA County yesterday. An off-duty firefighter went into a firehouse, shot two firefighters, went home, and took his life and started his house on fire. And so I do know some folks out there, but I do at least want to acknowledge that unfortunate event yesterday. And on that, I will take questions, but Betsy and Christian, I want you to know I pay attention when I walk the boardwalk, so this is my nature on the boardwalk moment for all of you, and I will take any questions you have.
Chief, how large is your staff now? You know, total volunteers?
In total, so, great question. This time last year, there was 40 on the roster. This year, it's 29. So we have our, we have our career staff, we've added the one. We've had a change in some part-time, but we've actually lost some volunteers over the last year. A couple older, one hurt, a couple just chose not to volunteer with us anymore. So we are probably, we're not bad. If you look back over the years, high twenties aren't terrible, 40 was high, but we're down. We're down to 29 right now. The addition of the two firefighters will be really helpful, if we can get that through. That'll guarantee three, 24/7, 365, which has been my goal over the last few years.
Was that drop of 11, pretty much all volunteers?
Part-time and volunteers, yes. We're also trying to, back to the part-time, we're trying to limit that. You know, we were carrying the load, so it was on the roster. They weren't necessarily participating a lot, but with the changes, we don't want to carry, carry a big roster for that. Thank you.
Thank you chief.
Okay, well as usual, we'll start by just touching on a little bit of the permit activity. For the first time in a long time, I think we've had a change in the other direction. So over the past month of May, we did see a downward trend in the number of permits from the prior year. If you recall, prior year, we were sort of coming out of COVID, so I think we had a little bit of pent-up demand at that point. But you can see, it was down, but then if you go to the right-hand column and look, you know, we're still up pretty significantly overall with that 9% amount there. And you know, as you can see at the bottom right corner, 7% for the total number. We're still up over 50 permits from where we were at this point last year. Looking at areas of activity, looking at the northern part here, you can see some, quite a bit of activity up in the Sander Lane neighborhood area there at the top of the map, as well as Carolina Dunes, sort of in the center of the map there. Shifting over to the south side, a little bit more spread out, but interesting little cluster all the way at the southernmost part there with Jay Crest and Bias Shores and some of that area in there. So seeing a little hotspot of activity down there. Just to highlight a couple of significant permits, we did have another new construction permit issued, 1362 Duck Road. This is a four-bedroom house there. And then a really substantial renovation project at 135 Widgeon. You know, just look at that, not adding to it, just completely redoing in that project. And then just to go over briefly, not as, not as much stuff this month, but just kind of highlighting some of the other projects that we're looking at. Got a photo in the upper right corner there. Once again, we had a big rain just before the council meeting, so we've had wet pictures for you the last two months. But again, this relates to the rain garden, wetland construction. You can see that picture is from today, what the wetland looks like there. You can see it begin, it's a little less, little less brown, a little more green, and that'll continue as those plants along the side and in the bottom continue to grow. Curiously enough, even though in one way it was helpful because you didn't have a lot of water washing through it, but that whole period, dry period of weeks was actually not a good thing for this project because the plants that we planted are meant to be wetland plants. They're meant, they thrive in that type of environment, and they had a rough time with it, so we actually had to water them to, you know, just to keep them, you know, give them a little something at least. We hope that they continue to do well, but we'll, you know, we're watching and evaluating those as they begin to fill in. You can see them rising up above the water there in that upper right picture. Once again, we will be revising the grade as it goes out to the road. You can see there's still a little bit of standing water, but as those plants further establish themselves, we'll regrade the little channel going in there, and that should take almost all that water off of the road and sidewalk in that area, which is really one of the key goals for this project. This is one of those nice projects because it, you really have multiple benefits, you know, getting, it's a stormwater management project that does a lot of public good from that standpoint, but it's also a really nice model project for people to see firsthand and understand how it works, and you know, be able to take that back and be able to do something similar to address some of their own issues on their own properties. And there are opportunities similar to the grant that we got. People can, individual property owners can do that. So one thing I did want to touch on here is I've had some conversations with Christian as well as Dare County Soil and Water Conservation, and we are in the process of putting together some interpretive signage and things related to this project. Recently have become aware of an opportunity to actually coordinate that with a local Boy Scout as part of an Eagle Scout project to help design that and even work with Dare County to get some funding on behalf of the town for the project that we would match. You know, so we're looking at putting that together, but it could be interesting, we may have a young man in here probably in a couple of months talking to you about that project, so. Just so you're aware, that'll be a, kind of a neat opportunity to kind of broaden that in the, in the community. Another thing that Kim Pittman is working on, he's designed and built a, this is not our gauge, this is just a, this is a picture of what it is though, but he's got one that's an even better design as far as a mounting device. Sandy Cross had put in a lot of time in meeting with Sander Lane Resort to get approval to place this first device on there. They have a sort of a pure gazebo feature on the sound there, and it'll go on that structure. And Kim Pittman again is designing the mounting device for that so that it gets enough sun because it is a solar-powered device, but it has to be at the right height. What it's doing is shooting beams. It's not, it will not be, if it's in the water ever, that's not a good situation for this. It's shooting beams down to measure the height is the way that it works. So that'll be installed very shortly, possibly by, as soon as this Friday, but if not, very shortly after, and then we'll begin to get data from that device. And as I've mentioned before, we'll have a second one on the way that we'll be using closer in here to the town property. Beach nourishment, not a ton of update here. There are a couple of key things, one of which occurred today. We received a letter, the state of North Carolina has given us, I guess this is our first, our first permit in hand, put it that way. State of North Carolina has given us authorization to use their beach to conduct this project. So that's just one, one step in many, but there, some of those pieces will begin to fall in place over the next few months, and we'll, we'll keep you updated on those. Other thing I did want to mention, last thing there, we are still working on obtaining construction access easements with Barrow Island Station and the Sander Lane neighborhood. And finally, just wanted to highlight, all of you were in the loop on this when Mayor Kingston had signed the extension of the temporary business accommodations. Council may recall the way this came about. There was an ordinance that was adopted that was basically very general that gave the mayor and the authority to instruct the manager to do things like this, and that's what the ordinance did. So we didn't need to change the ordinance to do an extension. We did talk through it, and mayor decided to extend that, similar to what a lot of other communities on the Outer Banks have done. So again, the intent of this is simply to continue to provide some flexibility for our businesses here in Duck that are still dealing with, while the governor may have lifted most of the COVID restrictions, as you're all aware, there are people who are at different points in their lives as related to COVID. You know, there's some where it's still a significant concern... You know, there are some where it's still a significant concern, and they, they want to, we want to allow the businesses to accommodate those kind of needs. So, that was really the impetus behind the extension. It was extended through November 30th of this year to get everybody through the high season and really the bulk of the remaining shoulder season as well through Thanksgiving. And at that point, it would expire the way that it's set up right now. So, unless something changes, that's the intent. It's still the same type of ordinance as far as those allowances for outdoor dining areas, outdoor display areas for other types of businesses, and use of tents. We have a photo there of an example at Red Sky with what they're using presently. And again, the intent of this is just to allow those businesses to operate at their original capacity, you know, what they were able to do before COVID happened, allow them to continue to do that, but spread it out in a way that makes more sense for them and their customers. And that's all I had for you this evening, but be glad to answer any questions if council has any.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Good evening, council, and everyone watching at home. Just like I did last month, I'll dive right in with a quick update. I know everyone's aware about the changes in the executive order and the mask mandates. So, just a brief overview, on May 14th, the state did change, issued a new executive order and changed the mandate to align with CDC recommendations. And just a few of the key points are there, that face-covering requirements are lifted in most settings. I did not list the exceptions here, but mostly medical. Capacity restrictions are lifted in all settings, as well as social distancing requirements. And I did want to highlight here, I don't know if we have businesses in Duck, but I believe we do, that are still requiring guests to wear face masks. So, I did just want to remind the public and the visitors and everyone watching at home that businesses are still allowed to do that, and to please be kind and follow the instructions that you may see on the door of a business. I did also, one time, mention two items. We have not, I have not used this graphic from the state that backs up our mask up. I, I do know that in Dare County, a lot of our residents are vaccinated, and our county doesn't seem to have the need that other counties do to, to push it very hard, but this collateral material did just come out, so you may see this on, on some of our items. Dare County also issued some signage for facilities to use. Right now, this has been sent to all the municipalities. Businesses are welcome to access this. I believe it's on their website, but businesses can also email me if they would like to use this information. And this is the signage that we currently have on our facilities here. So, I know what you're waiting for, the summer event updates. We are prepared to offer and will be advertising our fitness on the green beginning at its typical time in the middle of June. The great thing about fitness, once again, is that it's very adaptable for us. We do plan to begin it as a hybrid event, so we will be streaming it live for people to do online at the same time as we're doing it in public. And continuing this summer, if we do have rain, instead of canceling fitness classes, we will just switch to streaming them so people don't have to miss them, which is very exciting. And again, these are sponsored, so thank you to Village Realty and Zen and Zip for the fitness on the green items. And then, as we discussed a few months ago, we are moving forward, and we'll be advertising as full a slate of our typical events in August as we can. There, depending on how we feel about using the amphitheater and previous bookings, there are a couple of things that we may not be able to have every week like magic, but as much as we can, we will have those back. For events in July, we will most likely be looking at more somewhat impromptu events. We're going to see how these two weeks in June go, and we, behind the scenes, do have some things lined up so that we can deploy them very easily, including movies and concerts with local musicians. And we'll, we'll be doing our Fourth of July Window and Display Contest starting June 14th, no, yes, June 14th. We have 24 people signed up so far, including restaurants and shopping centers. We have made a Google map of the participating businesses, and there'll be a link actually on that Google map where people can vote, and so we have an online form where people can vote directly from there. We'll go June 14th to July 9th, and Betsy has been working very hard on getting the website updated with photos of the entries and the businesses, and so that'll all go live on June 14th, the map and the form to vote and all those sorts of things. And the winners will be announced Monday, July 12th, and we'll be setting up photo ops and maybe live streaming some things on our social media for when people receive their awards. Just a few updates, just from our department. One thing I did want to mention, thank you, Joe, for mentioning the interpretive signage. I did not include that in my report about the rain garden, but I did want to also mention that the rain garden will be highlighted in our July Destination Dare, and we also will have a bit longer video and maybe a little mini-video, too, for use on social media, and then for sharing with homeowners who might be interested in creating a rain garden. The website updates behind the scenes that I had talked to you about, I think, beginning at the retreat, we are still working on those. They are now linked with a forced update of our WordPress theme, so we actually have the ability to make some extra changes, really at no cost to us, to the way the website is set up. You guys, the user end will initially only see very subtle changes, and those initially will work on the functionality and easier location of information. We've received, taken in a lot of comments from the public about how to locate information and how they're using the website, which is really helpful. And then we'll be adapting from there, seeing how people use it. The internet site for the staff, which I also mentioned at the retreat, is behind the scenes pretty set up, but with the new personnel policy, now I'm able to flush that out, so by the end of this month, it should be available to all staff members where they can read the personnel policy, get forms for benefits, all those sorts of things. I also am working on updating the social media policy with assistance from the UNC School of Government. Thank you to the council and to Joe at the time for approving a class that I took with the School of Government regarding these items, particularly the legal items. So, Robert, you may hear from me as well regarding this. At this, at the same time, we are creating and implementing a social media strategy, so beginning most likely mid-June when events start, you may notice more of a rhythm to our social media, and it's really great what Chief Ackerman mentioned about reporting the crimes. We actually already have built into our schedule things for impromptu public safety notices that need to go out, so if they don't have anything pressing, we'll have some stock items that we can put out. And I did want to mention, I did not, I don't have the Jazz Festival information here because at the next meeting, I'll have all of our graphics and marketing materials and all those sorts of things for presentation, so you'll get those in July. And that's all I have. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Keep the snake at home, by the way.
Next council meeting. Here he comes.
Good evening, again, Mayor, Council. You have in front of you the graphics of the financial, monthly financial report you received and you emailed, the report that Teresa prepared for us, so you have a lot more detail than I'll give you this evening. I just want to cover some, some highlights for you. Currently, the funds on hand, we're a little over a million above where we were this time last year in cash on hand. We have about 9 and 1/2% of our funds are held in our operating account. You called me saying before, we try to keep that around 10% or less, or 9 and 1/2, we'd just done a transfer. We have a bond interest payment coming due and some other things, so we did make a transfer recently, so it's about $883,000. It's held in the operating account, and the rest are in investment accounts, getting whatever interest we can get in this environment. And that's shown on this slide here, which is the second image in your package. The really good news, and I think you saw this in the report from Teresa, is we've collected to date now 99.9% of our ad-vorm taxes. $4,754 is outstanding. So, that's a really impressive collection rate for real estate taxes, and holding out hope that we get the rest of that in the coming month, or at least we'll accrue into the coming month. Sales tax, which includes collections through March, is up $152,000 over the same period last year. So, sales tax continues to be very strong. Occupancy taxes, $353,000 ahead of where we were last year. So, occupancy tax is very strong. Transfer tax, $309,000 in excess of where we were last year. So, all those revenue sources remain very strong. We are already past the budget amount for land transfer and sales tax, so we've exceeded what was budgeted. Again, when we get the next occupancy tax, we'll get two more months' worth of that coming into our financials, we'll be beyond budget on that as well. So, revenues have been really, really strong in fiscal '21, so we're in good shape. Obviously, you know, and you see this in the report, the only state-collected local revenue that's still running short is the utility tax, and I've talked about that before. It's not a surprise, and it's not a lot of money, so it's about $25,000 below where we were last year at this time. So, in total, right now, and so this is the revenue comparison year, fiscal year to fiscal year, we're outpacing last year by $667,000. So, we're ahead in total collection of revenue by 667 over last year in the same period. We've collected 80% of our revenue anticipated versus 72% last year. Expenditures are within budget. Interestingly enough, 74%, we've spent 74% of our budget this year, and the same point last year, we were at 74% of the budget. So, expenditures remain right on track. We are, as Teresa mentioned, evaluating the need for, we definitely will need one more budget amendment, and that's for the beach nourishment, I mentioned that earlier, and then we're evaluating the potential need for a budget amendment in the fire department, which was one that was planned in November, was not executed in November. So, we'll give you more information on that, and we may need to do that at your mid-month meeting. Yeah, but in, so these are, just shows you the fiscal '20 versus fiscal '21, so we're, you know, revenues this year considerably ahead of expenditures. Expect to finish the fiscal year in, in this kind of shape, still looking at, in the neighborhood of $600,000 to $700,000 revenue over expenditures. So, be able to add a little bit of money into fund balance to try to get that percentage closer to your, to your target. With that, I will take any questions. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You noticed that the, that the transfer tax had exceeded budget already, but I also agree, am I, I think, I think that's also true for sales tax, the way I read it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, sales tax and transfer tax have already gone past our annual budget.
Correct.
And with the 600 and some odd thousand that we're anticipating, or that we're currently exceeding budget, then we're going to be able to put that directly into the fund balance, is what, what I'm hearing you say.
Yes, ma'am. Somewhere in the, in the 600,000, 700,000, based on current projection. Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
This is just a general question, and Drew, you probably don't know the answer, maybe Monica has some input. On occupancy tax, you know, one of the biggest issues has always been the Airbnb and the VRBOs. Do you know how they're doing with respect to collecting occupancy taxes on those?
Yeah, well, they do have a new category that they added about a year and a half or two years ago that is starting to show some real trending, so you can see, you know, year over year, what that, because they used to sort of lump it in with the vacation rental industry, and so, yeah, it is growing. It is something that, that they are supposed to remit, and it's a convoluted way that they do it, but it is showing the, you know, Airbnb and VRBO-type rentals. It's, it's quite a small in, in relationship to what the vacation rental industry brings in, but it is growing, and you can sort of see it.
I'll try, right.
But I will, I'll share that information, you know, with the council for next month. Or mid-month.
Drew, any update on your staffing plans for finance? You may want to share with council.
So, I'm working on the, you know, from what Becky Visa gave us for a position description, making a couple of changes to that, need to add some HR function to the finance-heavy job description that she had. Hopefully, I'll be able to wrap that up this week and get a job posting out sometime next week. So, it'll be a finance slash HR administrator, is what that position will be called.
Great.
And that is, so that's, again, that is the position that's in administration that is fully funded in the current year's budget, so we don't need to wait for the fiscal '22 budget to be approved.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, thank you.
Going on, item number nine, the mayor's agenda, a few things tonight. The mayor, chairman, other COVID meetings continue, although we've moved now to monthly meetings, or as required. Certainly, the trends are, as everyone knows, are down significantly. The last meeting, they were reporting around 300 tests a week, and active cases have been in the 10 to 15 range for the week, so definitely, hopefully, COVID is disappearing rapidly. I think one of the, one of the interesting things is only 50% of the county is fully vaccinated, which is, you know, I know that includes a lot of people that don't want the shots, but it's kind of surprising that the number's not higher than that. This same group, by the way, hopefully, we're not going to be switching from COVID to emergency operations with hurricanes, so we'll keep our fingers crossed on that one. I've got a lot of activity with the League past month, this month. Had our first committee meeting on finance last week in preparation for the first board meeting of the new board. I got reappointed for the fourth year, so I've been on the finance committee now for four years, and my term is going to be up the end of this term. The board meeting is, the first board meeting, as I mentioned, is tomorrow, and I'll congratulate Drew in getting re-elected to the board, but neither Drew and I will be in attendance at the board meeting tomorrow, which is in Raleigh. So, this council meeting tonight makes it a little difficult to get to Raleigh at the time, starting time. As you know, I was also appointed to the Local Leadership Foundation, which is getting basically re-initiated within the League. Relatively new board, I'm serving as president of that board. Our big challenge is going to be funding for the foundation, so we've got a lot of challenges ahead of us this year, and of course, it's going to be focused on basically economic development and education. So, this board is going to be challenged over the, over the next 12 months, which I'm looking forward to that challenge. We were talking earlier about Brick, and Drew has arranged a meeting with Senator Tom Tillis through his administrative person, so Drew and I are going to meet with Senator Tillis tomorrow evening at the Sanderling, 6 o'clock, which ought to be an interesting meeting, so we'll see what we can do to leverage him with respect to supporting the Brick project. I also signed three letters tonight to Senator Burr, Senator Tillis, and Representative Murphy in response to Joe's request to, you know, spur them on a little bit, maybe more enthusiasm to get more support. And it was my opinion that, in fact, one letter rather than multiple letters going in and getting into their mailboxes was probably better. So, that letter was written really basically supporting, you know, coming support from town council staff and residents of Duck, and it was well-done, and thank you, Joe, for putting that together. And then the last thing, just for council's information, time is marching on with our new town manager, and new town manager, and we have a review that's going to be done, has to be done by the end of July, so I've given Drew the process that we formerly used and asked him for some input. He and I will take a look at that and circulate it through council, see if we want to make any changes to that format. And so next, over the next one to two months, we'll be looking to do that review for Drew, and I'm sure I'll call upon the mayor pro temp to coordinate that. Because she likes to step forward and do that. And that's all I have tonight, so now we're going to go to item number 10, council member's agenda, starting with Mayor Pro Temp. Monica?
Thank you. I, just as a clarification, you said that you're meeting with Senator Tillis personally at the Sandaling? So that's kind of interesting, because he'll be going right past the project area, and that would be really great for...
Be nice if it was flooded.
Well, no, we don't need the flooding, but it'll be nice to have him actually see, see the area firsthand. So I mean, it's easy, easy to get him to go by the project area, so I hope that goes well.
Well, see if we can slide in some conversation about the core property while we're at it, and maybe the current, mid-current bridge.
Oh, yeah. Might as well go for it all.
Oh, yeah, right, exactly. He was in, what was it, two years ago, you and I met him? Remember when he came into Killough Hills?
Yes, yeah, he came in.
I think it's a similar type trip.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think, I don't know if he's doing as much this year as reaching out to people or not, but...
Well, I'm glad he's in Duck. That's great. I think really the timing couldn't be better. So thank you for advocating on our behalf, and that'll be great. I just had a couple of things. The, I sit on the tourism board for Duck, as you know, and they've been, I've been attending those meetings. We've been working on the Soundside Event Center and gearing up to have some events there, as well as expanding and designing some things. I think I mentioned the Boardwalk before, and some exciting ideas on that. So like, like many of the entities, there is over-budget money based on how many people are visiting the area, so they're looking at applying that money toward the event center if it's, you know, possible. So that's, the event center is really where they're focusing a lot of attention, but other, you know, and they've expanded grant money too, for events and for different, you know, a little extra money for fireworks and those kind of things. So it's great to be able to really get behind different entities that want to promote tourism. So I'm really happy to see all that, and the board is looking very healthy. Personally, I sit on the Lost Colony Board, the Roanoke Island Historical Association. I've been on that board since the beginning of 2020, and of course, it's, you know, last year, we didn't have the event, the show, but a lot happened in 2020. And I've maybe mentioned this before, but it bears repeating that, you know, new, new general manager, new director that expanded, incorporating, including the Native Americans through the Lumbee tribe. They actually added a Lumbee tribe member onto the board. There's been just a really great amount of activity and energy. In fact, the Coslin Times did a really nice article recently that kind of captures a lot of the things. And I, the, I think one of the most interesting things, since I'm sort of interested in real estate anyway, is the Morrison Grove property, which was a just absolute gem and an asset for the board. It's owned by the Roanoke Island Historical Association, and it was really becoming dilapidated, for lack of a better word. Built in the late '60s or early '70s, it's this whole campus of housing for the actors. And that 2020 hiatus allowed them to really take that, and with a lot of volunteerism, and some really substantial donations from locals who have held that, hold the Lost Colony performance dear to their heart, like Betty Kellogg, and then the Faring, Susan Faring was a board member, just used that to, and some grant money, just renovated so much of that. But it was a real grassroots effort, and it's still ongoing. I had an opportunity to see the renovated units, as well as some that haven't been touched yet, and it's night and day, paving the parking lot, making really nice walkways out of concrete versus just dirt paths, and it become, it has transformed more from like a camp of atmosphere to a really nice place to be that actors and visitors alike can join in. So they're talking about having visiting professors, maybe from CSI and others, and being able to rent out some of these units, Airbnb, and, you know, maybe ultimately inclusive housing. I would love to see some kind of expanded project for that area, but it's just exciting to see that happen, in addition to everything that went along with the performance. So all that to say, I really hope everybody will join, come and support the performance. It just started last Mon, Friday. I got the chance to go see it on Monday night and was really impressed. It's different, it's very exciting, interesting. It's got a lot of choreography in it, and I think everyone will really enjoy it and see a nice refreshed performance. So I encourage everyone to get out and see the Lost Colony. That's all I have.
Monica, are they being limited in attendance by the federal government?
What's that?
Are they being limited in attendance at the performances?
That's a great question.
Because David Hallig said they were, but I didn't know.
I have, I, you know, when I went, I'm really not sure. They probably have some kind of a limited capacity, but ticket sales are up overall, which is a nice indication that people are interested. You might have heard some promotion in the local radio, and, and Dave Halick was at our board meeting last Saturday to talk about just the facilities, it's themselves, and boy, he's got a lot on his plate, that guy. I mean, he's just amazing. But it seems like it's going to be a healthy season if everybody will just join in and come and see it. So I encourage everyone to give it a, give it a look, and it was a beautiful night on Monday.
Thanks, Monica. Councilmember Rob?
Nothing for me.
Councilmember Sandy?
Nothing.
Councilmember Nancy?
Well, I'm, was happy to report that we finally met in person for the Access Channel Committee, and that was nice. And that's a great group. It's, it's wonderful to hear what all the different towns are doing, and how those kind of community projects or initiatives that are happening all across, you know, our larger community are being promoted across government access channel. There's a lot of discussion about COA, and, you know, all the news and all the excitement about the campus and the students, and they had an in-person graduation, which was interesting for me, because I had just come off doing the scholarship for the Community Foundation, because I sit on that committee. And we had, you know, we noticed how many students really benefited from being able to take the classes at COA and now go into school, you know, with their associate's degree. And we've actually had quite a bit of discussion at the Community Foundation level about what the, between Dare County and North Carolina, how wonderful that is for students in Dare County and North Carolina, and the guarantees that they will have if they go to a North Carolina community college, or a North Carolina higher, you know, public, public education. So I think that's, you know, it's all really good. So there was quite a bit of discussion around that, but I think everybody's beginning to roll out their, their projects and their plans and their events for either late summer and the fall, and a lot of things to, to keep the government access channel busy.
They have a new director now too, don't they?
Sorry?
They have a new director? Did they hire a new director?
No, they hired a new...
Producer?
Producer.
Yeah.
Skip, Skip is the...
Yeah.
Skip Wallace is still the director.
Thank you, Nancy. Item number 11, other business. Are there any additional public comments to come before council this evening? Any other business to come before council, by council?
I think Ben has one.
Oh, Ben, do you have a comment?
I just made it earlier on. Thank you for everybody, what they're doing. I want to redo that whole thing. I do see the, a lot of people on edge out there. I'm out in the community all day long, in and out, properties and whatnot, and I really feel that patience and understanding is going to be a really big thing for this year. I've noticed a lot of, actually it's kind of scared me, is there's not people stopping at the crosswalks. I've noticed that a lot. I'm not sure if it's, we have a new group of people coming into town, or education or something of that nature, but I've noticed kind of an influx of, I've been stopped, where I've stopped at on the, if the person's on the other side of the road, I'm on this side of the road, and I've seen that they've been sitting. I will stop, and I've seen on several occasions, three or four cars go through before somebody recognizes, hey, the one lane stopped, and finally let somebody through. But again, hopefully, you get a lot of patience and understanding this summer, and we have a all good summer, and thank you for everybody, everything everybody does. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ben. There being no additional comments, I'm going to close with other business. Our main councilor, next meeting will be scheduled, mid-month meeting on Wednesday, June 16th at 1:00 p.m. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned.